And this is real call. I'm Miss Scott.
Here.
Mr. Hill.
Here.
And I'm here to do just, I'm here to announce, uh, on the awards and presentations, I'd like to do that. I'm proud to be on our agenda. So, Miss Austin, for the young citizens, a whole night, we get that type of care.
Thanks.
But, you know, we did a roll call, so all that's much for him to do. The dedication and everything, please.
By the way, this is the life of the United States of America. You're too dear, though, for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father in heaven, thank you so much for this. For you have given us a simple thank you for life and all your many blessings, Lord. But most of all, we thank you for your love and your grace. As we go into the business meeting, I want to pray that each one will put themselves aside and look at what's best for the county as we proceed here tonight. May I ask these things of Christ, man? Amen.
Amen. The commission and everybody who's got their black, all that you have for your service, such as champion for the veterans, the Cleveland County Commission and offices, your outstanding commitment to servicing our program for 15 years in the office of veteran affairs, January 2022, and we certainly appreciate you because I've never heard of words of bad words. You've always done a great job, and the commission just wants to present you with it. Any one's call.
Can we get a picture of all four of us? Yeah.
Goodbye, then. Hope you enjoy the fun tonight with me.
It's kind of happy.
Just tip it over a little bit.
Well, it's good work.
Especially the stars that brought them to that, I bet, and you know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're back in order. We've got quite a few comments and citizens tonight, so one call Tracy Burke, but I want to remind everybody, we've got a three-minute rule, and that's where you keep, so we might be here all night.
Good lord, three minutes?
All right, now buckle up, buckle up. You can talk about one other issue.
All right, now I'll try to draw sort of a team, and so we've got some things for questions. At first, 2021, Kim and Crystal contacted the SUC code 19, money to camp as a different concept we didn't need, because at that time, the word was going to, um, one of the things we're trying to do now is, uh, the board's pretty much getting 10 million ounces at $96,000 for this, that's a no equipment. I've got a quick to cover the ambulances, but then I went and I got a grant for 140, which is a 25% matching grant. So, the board allowed me to take the 35,000 I got paid for the matching grant on the ambulance. I have about 61,000 left, and I'm going to buy a new response truck, uh, first response truck, and Jeremy's the one, hates to hear pretty of technical questions that I can answer. And it's going to replace the 2006 truck that we have now, so I've got the money to buy the truck, do everything for the truck, but then start and equip the truck. And Laura talked about this, and a cardiac monitor and loop device, a random 50 brand, a lot of people don't understand how expensive this equipment is, but, you know, the brand that I got for the truck is buying a power loader and a power top, it's another 50 brand. So, what we're asking, hopefully, if we ought to consider, is to allow, my general fund money, understand that, I've never asked you to last, you guys have money, know that, and it's some of the COVID-19 money. The hospital board has nothing to do with me being here, this is me doing the bad operations. We did get the formal tax, but a lot of people don't realize how little that is and how little it goes. I get $420,000 a year, and that just pays to keep the doors open. The only service pretty much that has to generate about 62% of my budget, um, my budget's 1.1 million, and I have to generate 698,000. And it's 420,000 coming from the formal tax, so any time I get additional equipment, as much as it is, I have to let the grants or the square branch shake leaves off the tree. But this truck, um, it allows us to, if I've got two trucks busy or whatever, and there's a lot of walk times at hospitals, and when you go to ER, and you make this, you might be on that walk for an hour, hour and a half, and that's better than some people, you know, there's some up north, uh, guests in the area, they're all three or four hours. And with us having two trucks and him in this video, best bet, and Jeremy, when he's off, you know, he's, a lot of people work double job, but he's just worked one. So, he's got the truck in his house, his paramedic, he can respond with a cardiac and loop device, he could work a, a, a heart attack by himself for 20 minutes, the whole.
Correct.
And we're going to put the drugs on it to help do that, you know, if we can get this equipped. The truck's nothing more than the first one to look there and wait, just not get there, we can put the equipment with it. So, um, I guess what I'm asking is, is, you know, we don't want to just see if everybody has questions, but hopefully, I would go for that quick enough, because three minutes and I'm on Tracy's land.
So, that number is 55, I thought.
Somewhere around there, it's, um.
I thought it was 56.
Well, I'll be honest with you, I looked over some of that, and he put in, uh, I could put the maintenance package under what I've got now, and save about six grand, so I think it'd be 47,880, 56.
Forty-seven.
Eight-eight, ten, fifty-six. Because in price, that other that I gave Laura, and I was talking about it, it was about 6,000 bucks, and I can get that added to my other one for a lot less money. I'm paying 1,020 for four, so for 250 bucks, I can put that in for my operational expenses and save 6,000 bucks. I just don't see the reason to pay it.
Uh, one thing is, is to get with Lisa, and say, is it okay if we use this money to do this?
I think you can put it through the I B M.
So, that's what I'm saying, we need to, I mean, get the package put together just like that, it's almost like the way I understand, all this money has to be out of some grants.
Yeah, and as far as I look at it today, again, it is an expensive job that gets through here at the process.
It'd be just like a grant, but you're just a grant, like the mission.
Right, right, so, yeah.
Given the grant, okay, given the package, we gotta force it with Lisa, and then we'll see if we can put it, uh, well, vote on whether we can, basically, do that.
All right, so, did y'all vote on this month or something?
Well, we go to work session, bring it to work session, get all the information, so she can find out, we won't vote on doing it until we find out what can do, right? So, you need to put a little grant together, give it to Lisa, Lisa's going to run it by the A C C A.
So, all you need to do, cop systems, right?
Probably get the quick sleight of hand, you need to, you know, house, go and get the county and something like that.
And then, and then, and then just to tidy it up, she'll put running by the lady that's doing it at the A C C A, just say, oh, yeah, you gotta put it together right, but it shouldn't be a problem, and that's the little circle we gotta go through, so you got to come next month, that work session, to get that fully put in on the agenda.
Just make sure that, like Jeremy goes over it, that you do put on there the benefits of it, and how many, you know, how many people that it's gone solace, because I know that's one thing they look at, how many people, you know, this is going to handle.
And then, raise workload, you know, with COVID and all that.
Because a lot of times, when we run it lightly, probably at least a deep percent of COVID.
See that?
Y'all got any questions?
I'm sure you asked for enough money.
All right.
And, you know, Tracy, you know, you say you can do it and all, but I would still go ahead and ask for that total amount, just to be honest.
I always ask.
They've got their partner taking refunds.
Well, hey, I appreciate everything I do, and the board, this is how we manage this, is a very good board, they do a good job, um, anything that we did to help y'all, or help the citizens, y'all let us know, since I only have three minutes, like the other.
So, what was the number you said? What was the number you said?
I tried, Lee, I appreciate it.
Are you ready, Lee, Lon?
Yes.
Want to speak about the presentation, man?
That's what I said. So, it's the third set, is in the sixth one?
We'll see y'all. Hey, back down here.
Just back here, big same old dead horse, uh, wanting to go over some of the actions I've taken in the past few months, and, uh, what I thought was a plan that we're going to roll, we're back in August, uh, August, we passed a resolution here. It says, disattended use of chemicals for the purpose of retaining roadside dirt suppression. And I thought that meant broadcast spraying, where the truck drives down the road and sprays everything, that's my understanding of what retaining roadside dirt suppression would be, and we're not supposed to spray today anymore. There's the exception here, says limited use, limited use of chemicals, only in high-risk areas. Understand this, Scott, got our attorney to help formulate that last phrase, of, uh, high-risk areas, but you all have not a opinion actually defines what high risk means. Would anybody care to elaborate on what that's supposed to mean? Because I would have thought that it means something like dangerous for a loading machine or impossible to move, that would make sense to me, but none of this really makes sense to me at this point, so would somebody please share with me what high risk means?
Thank you very much, good day.
Well, what we're saying, what we're doing, and it looks like it's going to be two different things, uh, on the same day, you also passed a resolution on the next page, y'all follow along on the next page, says, solicitably, it's promoting and limited spraying in high-risk areas. And I do remember that that, during that discussion, our engineer said, did we, uh, work out what those high-risk areas were going to be within the next month? And then our attorney said, it would give him a chance, if you just go ahead and pass it, it would give him a chance to work that out with I B M, where they could spray, they could spray. And I don't know if that has been done or not, but I have a feeling that, that it's not. So, after that was all done, the 10th of August, on the 16th of September, the Department of Agriculture ruled against I B M, and, uh, put them on probation and fined them for wrongdoing and reckless spraying they did in Cleveland County. Now, they only got it for one thing, spraying the creek in Chuba Penny with arson place chemicals, they did not do anything to them for spraying metal boxes or trash cans, or kids blowing their drafts along the side of the road, a bit of walking on the strobe down the road, inside the tree, they only got it for one thing. So, even though 50 dollar fine seems like a damn fine, I think their carelessness, uh, was a lot more serious than the one thing they got in trouble for. Moving on down the, uh, page, back to the idea of, uh, taking this deal out for spraying versus mowing, Commissioner Hendrick said that it was just a lock-in crisis for mowing. The intent, the whole time, should have been not to spray, only time residents passed it, it was only about mowing, that's the only reason we updated this contract. Moving on to the next page, and that's just where the exceptions, the exceptions did, my favorite, right over there. So, uh, when it came, when it came through, the deal was, uh, was accepted. I understand that, uh, the last two pages, the guy in here, that's where you discovered the story about the, about violations. At that time, the, uh, details on that are not readily available, this title, uh, Miss Paul is going to have some more information about that, but, uh, I would like to ask you to stop the questions, I guess Laura's done the first one, is how do we define high-risk areas? Another question I have, if the commission makes a resolution to do something, such as cease mowing, or cease spraying and mowing, instead of, who enforces that? Is, is A C C A, or Attorney General, or who's overseeing the commission besides the citizens, which we come out here and we ask you to do this thing, but who oversees the commission to ensure that you did what you say you're going to do? Is there anybody that enforces what y'all resolved to do? The resolution we passed, the way I read it, was pretty much to get, when nobody wants to define high risk, which I brought up that night, was an epiphany, and that pretty much turns it over to our engineer. And over here, where you said I stayed about the, uh, locking enterprise, that's all that was, because the year before, they did mowing and spraying, so we were trying to lock in that mowing. When they started spraying, but we did the pricing. We, we, right, you had just said, we're not going to spray anymore, we're on the broadcast program, it's still allowed to spray in certain areas, and then five minutes later, when I think that, nine, five, two and a half, I think, an hour later, whenever it was, you say, well, this is just a lock-in crisis, crisis for what? Crisis for what you said you were going to do, which is, I didn't mean to insert anything, what you said, what you did. Who's going to enforce this? If you're not going to broadcast spray, you're not going to drive down the road with a spray machine and do miles of highway like you did last year. That's what you said you were supposed to go for, Mr. Hill, how are we going to enforce that?
We, we did stop it last, we did stop it.
You got a purchase order tonight, that you got to vote on?
Well, this is this year, we've learned a lot, and I think everyone here will agree with that.
When you passed the resolution, is it, is it out of expiration date?
It's up to the commission.
Well, then, I suspect, y'all may go ahead and vote tonight to start spraying, or, or vote to not spray, well, you already voted to not spray, now you're going to have to reverse it. Was that what we're going to do? Turn it around and reverse the resolution we passed in the office?
So, you're saying, high-risk areas is not sprayed?
High-risk areas is the only place you're supposed to spray.
So, who would determine that would be the engineer?
Yeah, sorry, he's not a biologist, how would he know?
I wanted to stop last year because there was too much going on, you know, they were spraying with pedestrians on the road, and there was just too much going on, spraying too close to houses and that sort of thing.
So, what is the expiration of that, that resolution that was passed? What is, is resolution 5148? And my copy of minutes don't have an expiration date, what did we have on the record?
Well, it doesn't have an expiration date, from what I understand, but.
Just to tell you, it takes any time, we can, we can run it back and start it. So, how can you issue a $14,680 purchase order for something that you said you weren't going to do? That's, that's an engineer, this year since the time it is. Because. So, he's expressed a desire to mow for economic reasons, that has nothing to do with risk. Would you say that a five-mile stretch between two houses is high risk? There's nothing in that that says it is high risk, but that's what it's planned on spraying. I'm not lying, so I'm going to have to enforce, stick by what you said you were going to do, unless you're going to put expiration dates on this, I don't understand how you can make resolutions that are not enforced and not stand by.
We learned last year during Alpha's episode, that we weren't contaminating the soil, we weren't contaminating the water, we, and no human being had been sprayed, we learned a lot, and we've got a plan, we, we plan to go with it this year, do things differently, smarter, a better approach, you know, say, out of the residential area, we've got.
The U N E resolution says that, because what passed last year doesn't say that.
That's a very sample thing, we, we can have one.
So, I, I do have concerns about inviting I B M back in here, giving awarding them purchase orders, and then on probation, and this is not the first occurrence, but they've had other charges against them in the past, but right now, they're on probation, they've been fined for what they did in Cleveland County, I don't have any reason to believe they're doing better, I know the unions do better, but I don't have any confidence, I believe they do better than they did last year. Thank y'all very much. Thank you. Miss Tate?
Spalding.
Okay, I'm just reading off what it says on my sheet. Sorry about that.
Yeah, he used to be.
Uh, can I ask you first, on my sheet, it says, here from the Department of Agriculture, or speaking, or you're kidding me, say it.
Speaking for myself, about their investigation, where our father played us. Okay, well, thank y'all for your time this evening. Last week, I was speaking to you up here about my expertise in plants conservation and pesticides. Roughly two weeks later, I was filing a complaint with the Department of Agriculture against I B M solutions, which resulted in their probation for the next 12 months, for not following the directions on labels, which is a violation of a federal law. I witnessed them spraying, and took the video from them spraying County Road 13 down County Road 24 into both Calhoun and Clay counties. They never once turned off their sprayer when they crossed a single creek, lake, stream, or even the hillside reservoir, where a lot of us get water. Okay? So, the way that federal laws work on those labels, they only did have one violation because it's the same violation over and over and over. It's not like in a court of law, if somebody murdered multiple people, they get multiple charges, it would just be murder, and that was it. Also, I, as far as this commission allowing I B M to spray, continue spraying that day, after being notified what they were doing, you allowed them to continue, but to do that and allow them in the future would just be negligent? Did you, I mean, even bother checking them out at all? Did you know that they was paid over $200,000 in October of 2020, because they weren't paying their bills from people they're getting product from, or that they've had complaints in multiple states against them? Or, in this state right now, they're about to go to trial for violating civil rights for discrimination? Is that really who you want us to be associated with here in Cleveland County and a lot of places? I don't think so. I mean, we can do much better. All of their documents, by the way, are made up on LegalZoom, a website. Their three letters of recommendation that our county engineer received from are the same letter, just the names are changed, you don't notice that? Biodiversity is extremely important to us, and maintaining that helps protect our air, water, and soil quality in this county. Your actions during the past year demonstrate this commission's lack of concern for our air, water, and soil quality, and the safety of the citizens and visitors here. I just published a scientific article that was on non-native invasive plants, came out about two weeks ago, guess what, all the plants are down here in Cleveland because of our jam-up dog. The plants you're trying to get rid of, I do understand that, but what you're doing is not only wasting the county's money, every time that you go out and do that and you don't do it right, you're costing us even more money in the future to go back and try to fix it. By then, it'll be irreparable. These non-native webs are reappearing quickly after spraying, I've shown Commissioner Hill this firsthand, how the state does it, and if you honestly believe the federal and state government does everything right, and I don't know why you're elected, because we start from the ground up to change, doing things the right way, is that not the way we're supposed to do it? Right? So, as far as I'm concerned, when I don't know the answer to something, I seek out the advice from an expert, and you right now are face-to-face with an expert, get him. And I'm probably the only one that's an expert on pesticides, biodiversity, and plants in this county, and you chose to ignore my advice last time, and you may choose to ignore it now, but I hope that you won't, because if not, you are actively destroying this county's air, water, and soil quality, native plants that include state and globally threatened or endangered species, for goodness sakes, and we are an ecotourist county, and our property values are going to go down. Let me give you two options, what costs more, property A, that's nice and green and pretty, they bought some native plants, or property B, where everything is dead except for a few non-native invasive species? That should be a no-brainer to every one of us if we stop and think. I don't want the next headline to be, we, ecotourist county, killing threatened and endangered species while endangering their citizens. Like, I've really just had enough, but thank you for your time.
Thank you. This is Jerry Hurd, for Animal Control.
Yeah, this is David Haye, hey, guys, this is Laura, Emma, Roger, and can you all hear me? Ladies and gentlemen, I'm here to die because we have a serious problem with chickens. Some of you may not think that it's serious, you might not love animals like I do, but we have to do something. We have so many stray animals that's being dumped, since this pandemic, the number of animals that have been dumped has doubled. Unfortunately, they like to dump them at my place of business, and that has to stop. Not only have we had the gates around our business, we've had the cameras up to try and catch these people that's dumped on, but not only is it down in Chuba Penny, it has gotten worse here in the city, which I know we're not discussing the city, they have a little kennel that when I see a dog run across the road, they pick up and they put in this little kennel, keep it for a week, and then they want to get rid of it. But, um, you know, I think, you know, yourself, that big house for animals over on Thomas Street, yesterday, I looked out, and we had 11 stray animals, uh, that was playing with local dogs and making them food, but my point is, is there anything that the commissioners, you guys can do as far as this COVID release money that's available to the counties and cities and, maybe, anything? Could we meet with the governor and see if she could maybe give a grant to build a shelter? I'm sure the county has land that we can build it on, or maybe partnering with Ramburn or.
At one, at one time, uh, the city was stepping out and really, they had a, someone to enforce a.
At one time.
Dog catching and everything, and, uh, at that time, I tried to get the county to go in and, and work with the.
With the city.
With the city on this, this has been going on, I mean, I get calls all over, but you know what we're doing with Otanis.
Yes, I know.
And, uh, and believe it or not, the conversations I've had with those people, and, you know, and he gets out there, and one of the guys, I think, he moved from the county to the city, and he brings five dogs, so he can't maintain, I don't know, I think, I think he knows what I'm talking about.
I know exactly who you're talking about.
And, uh, and a lot of times, these people, they claim the dog, but yet, you know, they're, you know, a citizen's hands tied, you know, they come over there and take a complete dinner for your guys, and. They come over there and take a complete dinner from your guys and, and come in the house and take it off the table, take outside.
Give it to the animal, yes.
I mean, well, they, they come in the house and take the food. And, uh, you know, they sat over there with us a couple times at the house I've been working.
Well, the, the number of stray animals in, in the city and the county has just got, it, it's, it's awful. I can't feed all of them. I mean, just last week, I was finding homes for six. Week before that, it was four. I have seventeen cats that somebody's put out behind my business. Two of those are mom cats that's pregnant, so that I don't know what's happening more this time of day. And I've had six, uh, dogs and sprayed them up off the highway. There's no, it, it's not anything fun to do. I mean, really, it's just, since I have been there five years, which no county, then I have spread up off the highway. And, but I just thought maybe the county could, you know, could we get an animal shelter because we need one? And there's a lot that we can do if we have that. And I know, Ms. Laura, you're kind of saying, where's this money coming from? Who's got money to pay that? Uh, where's the food coming from? What about the vegetarian bills? And all that. I, I know what you guys, thank you, ma'am. But we need this, and I'm begging.
Oh, so this is why I saw, I mean, last week, we talked about this two years, it's an issue that we're gonna have to address. Yes, it's been going on since I've been in office and we've always, you know, we have...
And that's why our situation, and I have a lot of issues in my areas, but I think it's in everybody's. It's in everybody's area.
Uh, there is a solution. I believe that we can put our heads together in a next work session and let's, let's talk about it.
I mean, you know, just... It's coaching, really.
Well, I still believe that a five-on-one say would be the best operation to go with.
And say, oh, that, that means it needs to be gone by volunteer. Yes, ma'am. Most of the animal shelters are on...
Yes, but it does not belong to the county, but it is a five-on-one say, and that way the county can contribute. They can get grants a lot better than we could.
Yes, ma'am.
But we need people that will step up and say, "I'm willing, I'm willing." I got one person that is willing to do that, and one person can't do it.
No, I mean, I know Sherri Brown, I mean, she's also trying to find homes for animals that people have.
Right, right. We need those volunteers, but, you know, they need to come to call us, you know, call in, um, let's, let's work on it.
I don't know, I don't know if, I might talk, ask the attorney, but it is, you know, on this, uh, five-on-one say. Is, could we create a board or a panel to, uh, or a board to beat over that, where they would beat ones that semi-run it, the volunteers that would come up, whatever, strike a volunteer for a hospital board? Were they, they volunteer for that, that would get them?
I would point out that one of the things in the Limited Self-Governance Act gives the county the ability to enact animal control orders. So if that act passes in November, you would have the ability to pass an actual ordinance dealing with animal control.
That's what we're doing right now.
Remember, these issues can go dovetail with that.
And I would say encourage people to, to accept the government's...
Okay. Explain to the board. Can you, can you accommodate that election?
No, I can't.
I can, I can explain a little bit. Now, Al Betland has a home rule set up where the county commission does not have the ability to enact laws or ordinances without going through the state legislature. But the legislature put together what's called the Limited Self-Governance Act, uh, back in twenty sixteen or seventeen. And it has to go through a referendum on the ballot, and the last time it came up here in twenty eighteen, the voters voted it down. What that act does is it gives the commission the authority to enact some ordinances, usually dealing with, uh, trash, sewage, and animal control, or some of the biggest areas that the county would have the power to do that. Uh, and that's one of the things that's on the ballot for September. So if that passes, the commission would be able to enact an animal control ordinance at that time to try to...
Even, even with that ordinance, I think we also would have to advertise it and let people know that we're gonna set up ordinance of whatever. It ain't like you say, okay, we're gonna pick all these ordinance and set them up without, you know, put a note sign, put it on our Facebook page or website, unless people know this is a ordinance, you know, whether it's junk yard or whatever.
Notice in here.
Okay, okay.
What's moving on in November just gives us the power to pass ordinance, because we would then have to fasten it before they could go into the commission. But we can't even bring it up until that gets passed.
And that's what we're gonna, the ballot, this will be on the ballot this time in November.
So from now in November, there's nothing we can do?
Unfortunately, there's not, because we don't have the law and we don't have a...
We can't enact the law, the county.
We can't go to Governor ID and ask for money to build a shelter.
Well, we can start, we can start working on that, yeah.
The shelters.
But I'm talking about to implement that, we gotta have a...
The ordinance in place. I said we can say.
Unlike, unlike a municipality, a municipality could go to tomorrow, you know? Uh, but with a county, anything, to tell the citizens or give the citizens an ordinance or anything, we gotta have, the legislators have to give us power, we don't create any power, we're just that policy.
So between now and November, you could meet with the governor and see if there's any of this COVID release money that the county would be eligible for to, for that shelter?
It's, it's not, it's not... Uh, create a panel, like, you know, say it. Of addicts, come up with ideas, management of it.
Yes, sir.
What it, you know, and what do we want to do, need to do, and how we're gonna do it.
Yes, sir.
And then, if, if we can write the ordinance and enforce it, then we'd be ready, we'd be ready to go.
In heaven, in heaven, yes, sir.
It's a process, I guess, that we begin to go forward with. You know, before, we just kind of, we don't have a solution. I don't know, we've, we've got to do something.
Yes, ma'am, we do, because there's just too many out there that's, that's dying, that's getting hit by cars because of something that is controlling.
Let us, like, take government control over this money. This money's federal, so see, that's what I say, sir.
Well, uh, Jeri was screening down tonight on her website, and she does have seven hundred and sixty-three million dollars set. It will be eligible for the cities or the counties, but they have to apply.
That's state government.
But anyway, whatever we can do, I would appreciate, because it is a problem and I don't see it getting better. I see it getting worse. I still kind of want to feed our animals now, so it's not, oh, let's take them to the feed store, because she sells babies, she'll feed them. I can't do that anymore. So, Amy, you can appreciate it.
Thank you. Our comments are official. The office is good open, I know it's good open. Uh, COVID areas, if there's any, and, uh, what are the ideas?
I did not say one with the box with the signatures, but, uh, I can say that we can sign off on one of these copies that the citizens, and I think we can find their initials on each one of the items.
Oh, she's...
Do you have it?
Yeah.
No, I'm like, no one is down alive in that, but twice as bad, twice as bad.
I lost, you know, we need more, I don't think, positive.
Okay, let's take a hint while everybody signs off on this agenda.
Actually, I'll follow, because I can solve it. Amy, hey, I will be there.
We turn to the media.
I would like to even headway to the D H R forward.
We have, uh, two openings on it, even after we appointed the last late, uh, I mean, two are going in. Like, one lived out, say, one throwed off, and two don't want to be reappointed. That's what an email I received. So, we never emailed, we didn't get somebody on.
What I know, that's all I have is for the H R board, all of the board. I think we can get a list of all our board members and when their terms are expired, we already did.
I can't remember, I'm gonna look it up, one, nine, four, the county, or, I don't know.
That one resolution, I couldn't remember, we're just gonna take it out of...
It's just gonna be losing money.
It's the money, it's in Turkey, and then I'm like, it's already, it's already there.
I thought it was, I couldn't remember, we're just gonna take it here, here.
It's just, it's just...
There was a grant coming in, and she spent some of the money, but that money left over, we just didn't move it. Inside, I believe. You want to sign?
Yeah, I'd like to clarify about something. I am the co-chair, but I also represent issue three, so I consulted with the attorney and with, with the judge, and I am allowed to vote. And I'm allowed to discuss, you know, unlike Ryan, since he is the, the chair, he's only allowed to, kind of, I'm allowed to, just like a regular commissioner.
Amy, you can pass this one back, um, to this one, yeah?
Yeah, I, I mentioned it, didn't I? Yeah, I put a mention back.
If everybody had signed off on everything, just that number five. Uh, we will bring that to Adam Davis under D G S. What time I'm doing? It will be, uh, it's Adam, Adam and the Senator, it's gonna be over the D G S time, David. Okay, so you got some sign. Um, that's permission, that's the way. This call is first.
Second.
All in play.
Uh-huh.
Already passed. Once we move on to new business, new business, I don't know. Whereas the place we kind of commissioned, it's a hard side strain, but we can maintain high levels in County Road. Whereas the engineer asked for purchase order for I D M solutions for this year's spraying. Whereas Commissioner Lord asks that the company not stray to her side in their district. Therefore, the different county commissions agree to eliminate the spraying program for this year's one. Ms. Callum, first.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, I'd like to, uh, do a clarification on, I wasn't here, I guess I was out of country when y'all changed up on the spraying, uh, trying to bury this high-risk area. I know when I left, that, uh, for mine, it was engineer, was looking at, uh, taking a list of areas, certain areas, to where you put the ordinance in, that we wouldn't spray those areas, and spray them around waterways and stuff like that. Remember that conversation?
Yes, uh, and what we was looking to do on that, never did, when I asked for definition on high risk, that never was defined. And you go to the waterway situation, once again, don't spray across the waterways, because that, one footers, that a thousand foot. Uh, you go by the labels, some of the labels are black, so you spray it to the bank. Do we follow labels? Do we, what we did? And I never got any definition on either. That's what we were looking for.
So what would you think would be a safe distance from that waterway?
If the label says it's sprayed at the banks, it's sprayed at the banks. I see all the labels.
When you say it to the bank, does that say all the way across, from, across the water to the other side? Do you stop at the bridge? Do you see a bridge?
We stop at the, we stop at the top of the bank.
At the bridge.
Ms. Callum. I think that I, you know, I, I did say I have a feeling of the waterway, you know, we did discuss that, and the waterway, you know, uh, and then areas that are, probably, you know...
How, you said a hundred two?
But that, you know, was some things that we had discussed that, um...
Uh, the other, the other thing is, is, you know, with manpower, trying to keep our, our moors going and stuff like that, we discussed all that. I'm just trying to frame up what we got going on here. Uh, you know, I see sprayed throughout other areas, which makes it run awry, whatever, but we still have the option that, uh, what the commission pursues to do, to give you a clear definition on what you need to be doing. Now, I don't want to be spraying people with, with the poison. I think one of the biggest problems we got into that we thought was gonna be better is to try spraying on the weekend or on Saturday or something like that, which we know then there's more people out there, grass, weed along the side road, which if we learn from that, it's better to do it during the week, where there's not as many people out on the trails, walking and...
That is part of current plans, just make it through private.
Correct, okay, so, uh, and on, uh, I guess we're talking about true resolution, right? Uh, the only thing I would ask Ms. Callum on what I have a feeling for, is I have that, I might have that in your district. And, uh, and I know everybody's got their own opinion, but I wrote all the districts out here, like, when I stayed whenever we first brought up this spraying, that, uh, that I knew there was gonna be some kickback from, but, uh, as I wrote out in the county, I see a lot of good that it has to... Uh, I haven't seen when you can't see stop signs and bridges and stuff, when you get to them, you can't even see the reflector, still there's a bridge there or a curb between the cuttings and ours. Uh, my suggestion would be, number one, uh, we need to do away with tar and gravel. Anybody thinks you're gonna be doing tar and gravel?
I don't give any anyone.
Well, I mean, you got, you got, none of us has got any of that.
No, I got zero of them, really.
I've got zero too.
Well, I know that the other two districts got all the money, so I wasn't gonna say any of them.
But I, but I think there's some roads in your district to be done this year, so you get your cutting grass. I'm just, I'm just sort of looking out a month across the country, I mean, across the county, to sort of see, to sort of put together my decisions on what I've done as far as moving forward with. So, one of the questions, or one thing I would ask on your resolution is at least look at staying off out of residential area and just doing your major collectors and your minor collectors, and stay off out of areas where the house and the most populated areas are.
I think what you and I had talked about, but it's, it's not a clear understanding, and I think he, he talked about it, that he felt better with this resolution.
I just, I've got house definition, because as it stands, so you're looking at a thousand different scenarios. And so one thing that's coming up is, is mailboxes. So if there's a mailbox sitting on the side road, it's nothing but bush and weed. Bushes and weeds and stuff behind it, are we supposed to stop? Were we supposed to stop it from that mailbox? Do we stop on our foot from that mailbox, do we stop at the mailbox, do we spray behind it? If we skip it, then am I coming back with a mower, and I'm gonna have to mow this area, and I'm gonna have to skip over this and mow that area? We'll do that, and I'll do this mower. Uh. The lack of definition is my problem on it. We need to, we need to pick a plan, my opinion, we need to pick a plan for the county, whether that's mowing, or whether that's spraying. And we need to stick that down. When you start trying to break it up and say, well, I want this, I want this, I want this, there's so many scenarios out of county that you cannot go through. And pick each little mile that you're gonna do and, and spray it, it's just not good. So all, all I'm asking for is definitions.
And that mailbox, my biggest concern is that mailbox, somebody's gotta go touch it, get the mail out.
Can I talk, if I may on that? I. A lot of people were walking to their mailboxes that Saturday that they sprayed in my area, and they had no idea that they sprayed. And as far as your definitions, unfortunately, you won't even be able to set. Limitations on how far away from waterways or anything else, because that is dependent upon the label. And if you change labels like products, that is a different set of circumstances altogether, just an FYI.
So, going back to my question of spraying your minor and major collectors in that area. Would that, uh. So are you saying that, cause me and you had talked, you talked about if we got forty some areas, we wouldn't go spray it. Then.
Were we, were we not gonna spray?
Right, that's what I'm saying, so, uh, that's what I'm trying to get to now. So, uh.
And that's what I'm asking. Cause to me, that mailbox, if there's nothing behind it, but right away, and weeds that I have to cut, to me, that needs to be sprayed. If it's a yard, we didn't spray it last year, we're gonna spray it this year. We skipped yard, now there was some spot that somebody might try to cut quarter mile down the road, and they said, well, I'll cut the grass on that. But that one pass down the road, back down the other side, doesn't, doesn't do anything for that other twenty foot, twenty-five foot or whatever. That's where I'm asking, what are we wanting to do?
Okay. We got a resolution on tape. Is this something you wanna vote on, is this something you wanna stay with until next month?
No, I don't want to vote on it.
You don't have to vote, and you can't bring it back?
I know that, I know, I get that. But still, I mean, I mean, he's wanting a clarification, and I'm trying to give him one.
But this resolution is pretty vague.
It's no spraying, because. That's what we talked about, you know, not spraying in the residential areas. And he says, well, it's still vague. So I told him, I said, well, just, just don't spray in mine.
Okay, so what I would ask on, on your resolution, what I would ask is, so what do you want? So, so we're not gonna spray, so that means we're gonna have to mow. Are you wanting the spraying mowing on everything, the summer mowing on the major collectors, and the fall mowing? That we've been doing, or what, what are you, what do you want to say?
Look, you know when the area needs to cut, I mean, we, we've not always done it. The spraying and the fall, we, you know, we've not always done it.
They've always done spraying, they've always done a fall.
Was, was she outside, I mean, even who were at?
But this company, this company that, that have got a contract with, is supposed to mow them too.
Their contract price is two hundred seventy-five dollars a mile, growth in my price is two hundred dollars a mile.
But why do we even, I mean, you know, when I asked that question, you know, we said, well, they're gonna mow too.
They're giving us a price for them, but why would I pay them more to mow than what it costs me?
But then why do we even include them, why didn't we go out and look for other companies?
We did, we put it all out on the market, they were the only ones that were better, they responded.
We, we had them walk into a cutting price for this year, and there was a resolution passed.
But it's strictly for spraying, it's not for mowing.
No, the resolution said not to let them do anything the remainder of last year. And so, once you did that, that canceled the contract for this year for the mowing, so it had to be repeated. And my understanding, that was on a.
They were on, we put it out there advertising, and we're gonna run half months, we'll hand online.
But you're still saying, you know, the, you know, when I asked about it, I said, well, this is for mowing too, now you're saying that. No, it's not for mowing, because we're gonna do the mowing too.
The bid, the bid was for mow, but you've got to put it out there to show the prices, and then come back. Basically seventy-five dollars more a mile of what I can do for, then I'm not gonna.
Well, one, one of the things that we were asked about was, uh. Uh. That if you need them, they would be able to mow them. But by doing what you've done, you were only spraying, only mowing once a year?
Yes.
That's good.
We still have our brands. We still have our brands, I've got features.
Okay, well, if resolution fifty-one feet, then that do not go vague this time. And, um, the resolution says, where as many engineers ask the commission to renew roadside maintenance bid for upcoming years. Therefore, the engineer believes this is the most cost efficient option at this year's price that has already been in place. Therefore, the county Plating County Commission authorized the county engineer to review the roadside maintenance bid. But I didn't even solution for the upcoming year. That would have locked the pricing for mowing and spraying. And down here in the comments. I made a statement, the commission entered states that will be increased the price if you do not lock this agreement. But the resolution passed, and that's the reason.
The reason, because, you know, you have to mow it.
The mowing and spraying, both at the same time.
But, but, you can, my district, I have this line before, I have issues in my district. And I'm sure there are all over the place, but I have issues in my district, and I have to take my people. And not, not spraying is to take them, and so that's what I have to stand by.
And I understand that, can you demand one curtain, two curtains?
Lee don't have to make that decision, he feels like it's a real, that it needs to cut. I'm not gonna tell him when to go cut it, he's gonna make that decision. If he thinks it's, it's time to cut it, then we'll cut it.
Well, I think, I think, I think, I think each, each, there are one curtain already that will be, uh. So what should she be acting for, one more curtain? So she'd get two curtains a year in her district.
And this.
Can you, can you make that happen?
You can make it happen, yes.
So all, all this is better defined with, with the tire gravity, because the time and money, some of them. For the tire gravity is from the cost savings on the Hertz side.
So this is the time savings.
Yeah, I mean, it's, we don't have a big motor by a tractor, we gotta pick the truck, but.
I, I still have to, but that person's wild.
I got a question for you. I don't like that they would give some, one district, you know, not to other three. Is that even legal?
There is a provision in the unit system ordinance that allows the commissioner to express their desires for their own district. So that can be done.
So. Would we, we be on the hook for treating citizens differently, is that a lawsuit?
Well, again, anybody can sue anybody for anything. The question is whether it's defensible, and under the unit system, act it is defensible.
I don't know.
You can.
Okay, what's that? All of them, David?
Uh-huh.
All opposed?
Opposed.
All opposed. So, if guys, would it be brought back next month?
I think it can.
So, we know, I have a person here to break the tie, so it'll still come back next month. Um, okay, item B. Is. Resolution five hundred, like I said in the chamber. Whereas Plating County Commission says, they evaluate the purchase over ten thousand dollars, therefore, Plating County Commission hereby agrees to follow your request. Plating County Engineer, item M's solution fourteen thousand six hundred eighty dollars. I hear. All right, any discussion?
Uh, I, I have an issue, because I wasn't aware that they had this fine, and, you know, so I thought that the fine list was. Was clear, that they did have a.
So, so they had the, the one, uh. Miss Fowler was talking about from Ag Industries, that yes, they did have that fine, but they also have a, uh, one from. AM that come back and give a violation.
That they're under twelve month probation.
And five hundred five.
What does a pro base mean, twelve month pro base, one hundred five?
If you do it again, and this, like any other violation, it just, it would increase the, the management of the fine, or the trial.
Are we not concerned over the other issues that's been rolled out about this company?
It's. To me, if you look at any, you look at any major corporation that out there, there's lawsuits against them. These. Yeah, there's, there's a lawsuit, and yeah, there's this, but none of that. They also have good hair, they also won an award at the National Hertz Society Convention this year. There's, it's just going, going with sides you want for, there's, there's stuff both directions. Uh, are they perfect? No, they're not, but it's any, you know, it's any corporation. A lot of the stuff that they saw, you know, we were accused of spraying people, we was accused of doing all this stuff. None of that's really coming from, if, if we had done everything that we were accused, or they were accused of doing. I mean, they, they dig up the lawsuits, and they're not. Um. It comes down to, in my, in my opinion, it's my personal opinion. Pick a side and find as much for one side as you can, or it's just, what are, what are we gonna do?
I guess I'm just concerned that, you know, that they have.
Well, it doesn't help any that there's only one that bid, you know, so.
You ready to vote? All of them, David?
Uh-huh. Uh-huh.
No.
I think. All right, we got. You got a resolution?
Yes, sir, it's, uh.
We got an C.
Item C, we do the task, the engineer, the number one manager, to develop a formal new address policy for the commission to consider it.
We, we had a motion ahead there?
Yes.
Okay, motion ahead. Miss Cal, first, you, sir. Any discussion? All right, vote today.
Uh-huh.
Okay. Good answer. You need to read it again, or it's reading?
I might imagine it was set.
Got a second?
Second.
Uh, any discussion? Uh, right.
And I spoke with Lee about it before we started the meeting, and I just wanted to get the question. Well, they just clearly informed me, he's already got a policy for driving curb cuts. That's already out there, so it's just a matter of coordination, it's really a coordination between the new crews.
I tell you, a lot of these people, probably, we're talking about new people coming into the county, they don't know that. You're probably gonna wind up that little cracker on a little dollar.
It's on website.
I know, but a new person coming into the county, if they're not directed where they need to go, that's something we probably need to.
My, my less pipe price, I suppose, even.
Well, I mean, you need to, you are, you are, you need to be charging the cost of the pipe, right?
Yes.
Well, they gotta go buy the pipe somewhere, right? Now, you don't put them in gavine's pipe, or you put them in flash's pipe, is there a big difference in the price?
We're just doing gavines, and there's not much difference.
Okay.
We'll just do, just do gavines, typically it's fifteen inch gavines. If it requires more, requires more, yes, that's what we charge, is the cost of pipe, and then we'll install. They, they purchase the pipe, we install.
That's mysterious, that's another point. But a lot of them, that's, that's like, goes by, this escaped a forty-six inch, those amount, and then they wonder why, I'm, they consider it for another driver getting washed out.
All right, good work, Mr. Go ahead.
I don't know, like, when, when you go out and they don't, do, do you require them to, okay, this guy, we go, they're up, he got paid.
So, so we, so I can't require them to, they don't have to buy the pipe, I mean, but what I, what I do have in place. So on the county website, or the road bridge, there is a, what is it called, an access permit, it's a way of getting, like. Um, but it's a form that you can go through and just, basically it's just give me your address, if we're yet, and email that back to us. We go out, we take a look at the pipe, take a look at the drainage, and, uh, make a recommendation, we recommend that you need a fifteen inch pipe. At that point, you can install a fifteen inch pipe, or you can purchase one from us, and we'll come and install. I, if they want to install, one, you know, I'll just make a recommendation on size, at, at that point.
But then, like, you go out and they don't have that in.
They can get a nine one one, yes.
Like, right now, if I go out and somebody's got a six inch, somebody's got a six inch pipe, just throw it in the ditch, yes, I'll make a tear.
That's, that's what we're trying to do, because what Crystal said, is she's just giving them one save, whatever they say, with no verification. We want to start having that verification, and then once we get that done, it would be a bad idea to hit another two, uh, George Fuller's office to pick up on that too.
And that's the problem, if what I've got right now is. They don't, they've been a liar, if somebody comes in and just gets an address and.
So how's, how's the new lady doing, is she, I hear she's doing real good.
She's saying she's been doing pretty good.
Okay, so is it November when we start the exempted on the trash man?
Yeah, November first, or December?
Same, cause she just done that yesterday, don't she?
She pretty much did.
Well. So, the, I mean, it looks like the main. The point to cut all this off is Crystal went with the drakes. Because without the drakes, nobody can do anything, so she's the one that needs to.
Yeah.
Give a way, and they need somebody for her to give them the grades, so, you know, they gotta all work that out, and bring it back next month.
Cause they're gonna come to her for the drakes, and when they, when they come to her, she'll just give them me.
And then they're a form.
We get it filled out, get the, get all that settled, and then I can go back to Crystal and say, yes.
And would you give her the, give her the form that, that what the pipe, on the right away pipe is, is fifteen inches? Because if they say they're doing percent, they gotta go out there and in the middle of something, at least, they can call their guy and say, that pipe can't be a twenty, at least it's a fifteen. You gotta do that.
And at that time, can we incorporate, you know, if they're acknowledged, that, that bill, they have to contact, that you're gonna forward that address on to the health department. Somewhere in there, that way the health department knows that harm's gone out of safety, right?
Yeah, yeah, and elaborate with any of our own entities. It does. Everybody.
And I go back to, when it comes through that permit, we do that, but if it don't, if somebody just comes in and says something, you know.
She said.
But the last one said somewhere in there that.
I think that's what's been for, I think that's what's been for a long, I just think that's been done that way anymore. I wonder if they could drive in without a pipe, would cause a problem.
Now, they're, so if it causes a problem, then we take it out, you know. But there is, there has been some situations that I would have to, they're sitting up on top of the ridge, man, there'll be no water to touch it, and I've told them that they don't need pipe.
Yeah.
There are situations that they, that they don't have to have.
Well, the one I'm thinking of, the water backed up, you know, it backed up to the back of the car. Yeah. It's on thirteen.
And I believe you want to do it yet.
Okay, and so they light them for me, I don't want them to, just put the pipe in, put.
Let's move on, would, he can bring us the recommendation, then next month, we'll discuss the resources. All right. Boards will say, Ms. Colton?
I'm pretty pleased, by the close of the year, where we at on that? Did you, you ever get that, or?
I am working on the Gasky segments right now, and I did have, um. One of the auditors is coming in next week, she's actually coming to discuss cyber security, which they're reading in all counties, but also, she and I are gonna talk a little bit about those segments. So I'm, I'm working on right now, the financials that they have, have been in the year. I'm working on those, it's just pretty complicated. Time for the segment that I have, I'm starting working on, and she's gonna, they're very important people, and she's gonna come back too, so.
Any more questions? Um, county attorney, Mr. Lewis?
I'm, I'm.
County attorney?
No, report, sir.
All right, we've got some old business, which we actually put here in a special comment in January, but. We need to give it off the books here for ventilation projects, you know, staple, fill big where it can be sent. I know how to do it, I know, so how do we get, take that?
Bring this into consideration, if there's no motion, that's why I can look.
I'm bringing up consideration, chairman. Not to do a motion, not on here.
Oh, really? I thought you wanted, I thought you wanted.
No, it's just it, it comes up on the agenda, so.
Just motion that second?
If I ask for a motion, then there's no motion, yeah.
Okay, good.
Okay, all right, question that is, all right, discussing about the commissioners, Miss Cal?
Um, only thing, I have this black mix, I have black words in a, a work session to go into a little more detail on animal control and some of the issues that, you know, everybody kind of get their heads together, and let's talk about it.
All right, anything else?
I can say, um, now, doing that, uh, on the, I did get with five departments, there's saving time here, I think, represents saving, that they, you know, all, different departments, they, the total is saving, but Crystal's looking into the bank account, and hopefully she'll bring the person here to.
How much is saving one?
Well, it's gonna be about a hundred and seventy-five thousand, because they're twenty-five hundred dollars, right at twenty-five hundred dollars a piece, so we can give a grant, you know, for those that have been granted, but that's how many, that tells you, that's how many people that are risking their lives to go into these fires that's not protected.
Well. One, one wish back on that just a little bit, because I know in my district, they just like they have an expiration, they don't, and they've got some that's fixed to expire, they're still good at the moment, but they have some expenses to expire.
But I know, I think you understand, it's seven.
We're not sending anybody in there, in some.
But a lot of them don't, I mean, you know, these guys are gonna go into that house, and if that dude, at a day, they're still going into that house, they don't, you know, that, if there's a, somebody in there, they're not doing that, and if there's somebody now that we can get a grant for them, then we need, we can work hard and do it.
I agree.
Um, I mean, I know it's costly, but that lots a lot more costly.
All right, anything else?
That's it.
That's right.
It's more, I'm, my thing.
Think you got any, any more?
No.
I'm good.
All right. What else you do there?
I might smoke, please.
I'll send you.